Okay, we'll call the five o'clock meeting to order. We'll do a roll call. City Clerk, please.
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt. Councilmember Carrillo.
IT, can we make sure that they've got the information for logging here, sir?
I think, uh, Councilmember, Councilman Bettencourt just jumped on.
Okay, 'cause sometimes they're, they're, they're waiting in the closed session part. Okay.
Councilmember Loa.
Here.
Councilmember Bishop.
Here.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Here.
I'm here too.
Okay, good. We got, we got Ms. Bettencourt here and Mr. Carrillo logged in?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. We've got you counted present.
Okay, mister, and Mr. Carrillo's probably in closed session, right? Okay, IT indicates that he's waiting in us for closed session room. Okay, public comments. Now's the time for particip- public participation. For any person wishing to speak to the city council on matters listed or not listed on the agenda, I'm going to preface that with probably not, um, uh, public hearings. Those have to be held separately. Uh, within the jurisdiction of the city council, if you're attending a meeting by phone, uh, you press star nine to raise your hand. If you're on a computer, you do the, how, raise your hand button. We all ought to know how to do that by now. IT, do we have anybody, sir?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, do we have anybody now?
Not at this time.
Okay, uh, I got, uh, I got one public comment, uh, um, from a resident supporting our breast cancer awareness, uh, and that is the one electronic correspondence that I have at this time. Um, alright. Anybody in the audience wish to address the council at this time?
Mayor, we actually have another, a raised hand now on the line.
Okay.
One second.
Okay, can you please state your name and, um, what item number, uh, do you look into address, or if this is a non-adjournedized item?
Yes, hi, uh, Jason Zink here regarding the City of Palmdale contract. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, regarding the, uh, city, uh, attorney contract that you guys will be reviewing today, I'd like the city council to make it clear to the city attorney that he is the advisor to the city council, not the boss. The city attorney works for the city council. You are his boss. I want to remind you all, uh, there are more attorneys in California per capita than any other place on earth. Attorneys are dime a dozen. I will him to feel good and welcome, but I want him to understand. Palmdale is a unique hometown bill, even though we are big cities. Big cities don't have this relationship with residents like Palmdale. Because of bureaucracy, red tape rules, where council members become bubbles out of touch with residents and their city, uh, residents. Because of attorneys. Two examples. I was at the redistricting meeting and I was speaking to the, uh, the commission. And one of the commission members asked me a question and I responded, and the city attorney erupted and said, "You're not allowed to ask questions." I find that insulting. And I find it, like, you guys don't want our input. It's not very welcoming when a resident comes there and then a commissioner wants to speak to, uh, that person to get some background information of why they came up with their, uh, uh, district lines and we weren't able to, uh, respond back. That's not right. Another, uh, thing with the attorney was when, uh, Austin Bishop asked, uh, for, uh, with the Ledford scandal. He asked for the city attorney, if there could be outside counsel. And that city attorney bullied, uh, council member Bishop and is saying, "You don't need no outside city counsel. Ledford's innocent until proven guilty." When, when you think about it, he should have had out-
Okay. Okay, thank you, sir, and, uh, good to hear from you again. I haven't heard from you from a while. Okay, anything else? IT? Okay, City Clerk?
No, sorry, not at this time.
Thank you very much. And, uh, so we will close the public, uh, comment period at this time, seeing no other comments. Uh, we have, we will move on to item number five.
Thank you, Your Honor. The only items to be considered in closed session are those listed on the agenda.
Okay. Alrighty, well, I guess we'll go into closed session and we will see everyone back out here.
The time constraints, this matter will be conducted on October 20th, 2021. As item 5.2 anticipated litigation, the council has provided an update on this matter and provided unanimous direction to staff. There's no further reportable action at this time. As item 5.3 existing litigation, C V Communities versus A VAC, the council has provided an update on this matter. There's no further reportable action at this time. As item 5.4 anticipated litigation, the council was provided an update on this matter. There's no further reportable action on that item at this time. As item 5.5 conference of legal counsel initiation of litigation, the council has provided an update on this matter and gave unanimous direction to staff. There's no further reportable action at this time. As item 5.6 existing litigation, Special District Risk Management Authority versus City of Palmdale, the council has provided an update on this matter and provided unanimous direction to staff. And as item 5.7 conference with labor negotiators, due to constraints and modifications, the matter will return on October 20th, 2021. That concludes my report. Thank you, Your
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to our seven o'clock. Is this thing on? I think it's on. We'll move on to our seven o'clock meeting. We'll do a pledge of allegiance here and we'll have a moment in silence of our troops. I'd also like us, when we're having our moment of silence, remember today is the anniversary, I believe it's five years now, that Sergeant Steve Owens was murdered up in Lancaster. So they have a 24-hour vigil going up there, up at the park, but let's keep him in our thoughts tonight. And I also ask that at the end of the meeting that we adjourn the meeting in memory of Armando Alonso. He's a longtime resident. He was an entrepreneur and philanthropist in the community, one of the founding members of the Amigos de la Feria, the Hispanic Friends of the Fair, and he was the owner of La Palma Restaurants. Also Pat Mengele, a longtime resident, whose family owned Mengele Pools. She was a cornerstone in the Palmdale Sister Cities program, holding many officer positions and over the decades of her participation. So let's keep all those folks in mind as we do this this evening, please, okay? All right. Let's see. What do I grab? What do I grab? Can I grab somebody to help me with this? Jesse, I've never tagged you for this. Why don't you say the pledge for us,
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So this evening, we've got a couple of presentations we're going to be doing here, and Jesse's here with the puppy. But let's look at, I'm trying to look at my internal, we've got a spreadsheet on this tonight. So if we could get, we're going to look at national domestic violence, our national crime prevention, and our
The time constraints, this matter will be conducted on October 20th, 2021. As item 5.2 anticipated litigation, the council has provided an update on this matter and provided unanimous direction to staff. There's no further reportable action at this time. As item 5.3 existing litigation, CV Communities versus AVEC, the council has provided an update on this matter. There's no further reportable action at this time. As item 5.4 anticipated litigation, the council was provided an update on this matter. There's no further reportable action on that item at this time. As item 5.5 conference of legal counsel initiation of litigation, the council has provided an update on this matter and gave unanimous direction to staff. There's no further reportable action at this time. As item 5.6 existing litigation, Special District Risk Management Authority versus City of Palmdale, the council has provided an update on this matter and provided unanimous direction to staff. And as item 5.7 conference with labor negotiators, due to constraints and modifications, the matter will return on October 20th, 2021. That concludes my report. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on to our seven o'clock... Is this thing on? We'll move on to our seven o'clock meeting. Do a pledge of allegiance here and we'll have a moment in silence of our troops. I'd also like us, when we're having our moment of silence, remember today is the anniversary, I believe it's five years now, that Sergeant Steve Owens was murdered up in Lancaster. So they have a 24-hour vigil going up there, up at the park, but let's keep him in our thoughts tonight. And also ask that at the end of the meeting that we adjourn the meeting in memory of Armando Alonso. He's a longtime resident, he was an entrepreneur and philanthropist in the community, one of the founding members of the Amigos de la Feria, the Hispanic Friends of the Fair, and he was the owner of La Palma Restaurants. Also Pat Mengele, a longtime resident, whose family owned Mengele Pools. She was a cornerstone in the Palmdale Sister Cities program, holding many officer positions and over the decades of her participation. So let's keep all those folks in mind as we do this this evening, please, okay? All right. Let's see, what do I grab here? What do I grab? Can I grab somebody to help me with this? Jesse, I've never tagged you for this. Why don't you say the pledge for us, sir?
To the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so this evening we've got a couple of presentations we're going to be doing here and Jesse's here with the puppy. But let's look at... I'm trying to look at my... We've got a spreadsheet on this tonight. So if we could get... We're going to look at national domestic violence, our national crime prevention and our bullying awareness. I think we're going to talk about all those together if we could get the folks, Carol and Carrie, to come forward here.
Do we want to do a roll call there?
I'm sorry, did I miss that? We can redo that, go ahead.
Mayor Pro Tim Bedencourt?
Here.
Councilmember Carrillo? Councilmember Loa?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Here.
I think we actually technically covered that at the five o'clock, but yeah, we can do it over, it's no big deal.
Can I make a motion to excuse Councilmember Carrillo?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Bedencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so Carol and Carrie. So we've got a couple of combinations here, or present proclamations. Well, and the reason we're kind of trying to do these three kind of together real quickly here is, because they're all kind of related. You're getting bullied if you're a domestic violence victim. It is a crime. So they're all, these are all, you know, related. So the domestic violence, there's no excuse for them, okay? Walk out of the house, something. Carol, you want to help us and just let people know how they can, when they're subjected to something along those lines? What's available for them here?
Okay, good evening, everybody, and thank you. If you're a domestic violence victim, you can call the 24-hour hotline at the Valley Oasis Shelter and we will be able to respond immediately to your safety needs, doing a safety plan first and determining if you, where you're calling from is safe. A lot of times it is not. And so we have ways to signal other staff to call 911 and have law enforcement come out to the scene immediately for you. We also have a 24-hour shelter. The hotline number is 661-945-5509. And like I said, we can come pick you up. We have 24-hour shelter services for you and your children. We also, there's programs for transitional housing that we offer that can house somebody up for a year while we assist you in getting permanent housing. There are a lot of great agencies up here, including Children's Center of the Antelope Valley, to lifestyles, other programs that offer in walk-in services, supportive services, counseling as well in domestic violence. And so there are a lot of services. And there's an exciting program that the City of Palmdale is launching, but I don't want to steal anybody's thunder and talk about it, but I'm excited about it, where pastors are going to be working with the city and working with domestic violence agencies to be able to respond quicker, have a wider reach, if you will, safer places to go so that individuals can go first to where they feel safe, which is their pastors. And this is a brilliant idea, it's innovative, and I'm very, very thankful that Valley Oasis is a part of that new program.
Thank you. Valley Oasis has been a great partner. They've been really been helping us on the homeless issues and on domestic violence and other things. There are a couple of quick points I want to make, I'm not going to bore you with all the "whereas" in here. I think what's really important to understand is domestic violence can happen to anybody. It crosses racial, socioeconomic, gender lines out there. And in a lot of cases, people don't want to say anything because they feel like, that shouldn't be happening to me. It happens. If you're having a problem, these are the people to talk to, okay? So anyways, let me give this one to you and then we're going to have Carrie come up. And you want to tell us a little bit about these other two proclamations on bully, the bullying problem and on the Crime Prevention Month, okay? Carrie's our public safety specialist, but again, all these come together, so that's why we brought these ladies up here simultaneously.
Thank you very much. Yes, they all do come together. We just did an interview today with some of our community deputies. You can find it on our Palmdale Public Safety Facebook page, where they went in depth discussing bullying prevention, how to identify whether your child is being bullied or your child is the bully. So please refer to our public safety, Palmdale Public Safety Facebook page for not just information on bullying, Crime Prevention Month, domestic violence, a lot of great information we post from Valley Oasis and a number of other entities throughout the year, but especially focusing this month on Crime Prevention Month and anti, you know, bullying awareness and domestic violence awareness month. So it all comes together and we hope that the community will come together to try to combat some of these issues and work with the city, with our community partners and our law enforcement, first responders, on addressing these issues.
Thanks, Carrie. And for the businesses and stuff out there that seem to get the brunt of some of the criminal element out there, Carrie and her staff, working with the Sheriff's Department, have got some great programs that can help you along those lines. And it's really important that you take advantage of these resources to, whether it's a bullying problem, whether it's a crime prevention problem, or a criminal element problem, or it's a domestic violence problem, there's resources out there. Don't be a victim, okay? So John?
Great. Okay, thanks again. Thanks very much for being here.
All right, now I left my spreadsheet up there. Cybersecurity. Who's doing that one with us here? Is that the next one? Oh, breast cancer awareness, okay? So breast cancer awareness is the next one we have. Brian Moon? So I don't think there's hardly anybody around that hasn't had a family member or a friend that's been affected by various forms of cancer. A lot of people don't realize breast cancer does affect men as well. And I'm going to have Brian go ahead and tell us a little bit more about that. He's the COO of Palmdale Regional Medical Center, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, good evening, everybody. As the mayor talked about, cancer touches a lot of lives, a lot of families. I know personally and in my family, extended family certainly touched ours as well. So not only being a health advocate at the hospital, I certainly can attest to the importance of cancer awareness within my own family. And it really comes down to early detection. Make sure you're doing your screenings, talk to your doctor. The sooner you catch it, the survivability is a lot higher, obviously. So October is a great month to bring that awareness to everybody because it affects so many and make sure you get screened. It may not be the most pleasant thing to do, it's not the first thing you want to do when you wake up in the morning, but it could very well save your life. So we appreciate the proclamation and the awareness to the community.
So I kind of figured it was easier for you to say it. I'm sure there's parts in there that we're going to miss, but again, this is one of those things where I've dealt with it within my own family as well and it's, the sooner you find it, the easier it is to deal with. The longer you let it go, harder it is to deal with it.
Can I jump in, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am, please.
So as you all know, I am dying of cancer. I started with breast cancer and it spread to my bones. Early detection is a huge, huge issue. If you have a health plan that only does mammograms every two years, then I beg of you to get one every year some way, somehow. With this being Cancer Awareness Month, there are many places throughout the Antelope Valley that are doing low-cost mammograms and I'm going to post some information hopefully on our city website where women can go to get a mammogram for $50 or $100 for a 3D imaging. Also, the Antelope Valley Hospital has a night dedicated to Hope, Strength and Courage, Wednesday, October 20th, from 5:30 to 8:30, where they're going to bring in people to talk from the City of Hope, some radiologists, some cancer survivors. I will also post that information. I am going to die of breast cancer. Do not let my death go unvain, I beg you. To get second opinions and mammograms every year. I had a plan that did mammograms every two years and my cancer spread through my body over those two years. So please be your own advocate. Do not listen to just what your doctor tells you and get additional checks if ever you can. That's it.
Thank you very much. So that goes for all forms of cancer too. Laura really is putting a face on the issue here, unfortunately. But I know we've been dealing with it in our family, with some family members. Guys, you got problems out there, they can affect you, as well as breast cancer potentially as well. So if you think there's something wrong, maybe there is. Get yourselves checked. And Laura said it better than anybody, you have to be your own advocate. If it's not you, hey, the more this insurance company spends on you, the less money they make, okay? So don't let them get away with that, all right? So anyways, I want to thank you very much for being here, Ryan. I know there's a lot of resources over at the Palmdale Regional Medical Center. We have some new groups over there that have been working as well. We have a lot of resources in Antelope Valley as well. It's a system out here, folks. Make yourself available of it, okay? John? I could, Dyslexia Awareness Month, who's our? Oh, Robert Chu. This is another one where we've run into people that have, you kind of, hey, why don't you just read it? Why don't the kid just read it, you know? Maybe sometimes it's just not, the wiring isn't working right here. Bob, and he's our director over at our library. And so speaking of reading, and can you enlighten us a little bit on this topic, sir?
Certainly, thank you. Appreciate this opportunity. Appreciate the city recognizing the importance of being aware of dyslexia. If you're not aware, it's referred to as a reading disorder. Imagine, if you will, many of you are holding agendas and if you were to try to read that agenda with every third or fifth letter, it doesn't look as it looks right now. It's either it's backwards or it's upside down. That's one example, a very simple example of how dyslexia affects people. And one of the, one of the most important things, it's one of those interesting catch-22s, if you will, because folks who are dealing with dyslexia really can't get help themselves because they can't read very well or get the information they need. And so they need advocates, they need family members, parents in many cases. Being aware of children who are struggling, many times it's not that the child has a bad attitude, they're just frustrated and they don't even know why themselves. And so really appreciate the city raising awareness of this. At the library, we have scores of books, DVDs, information online that can help inform. We are not experts in helping folks to deal with the disorder itself, but we're experts in finding information where folks can help themselves and their family members.
That's well said. And again, this is something that hits one out of every five people. So some people get over it a little easier than others, but that kid or that guy that's just not like a really good reader, there might be a reason for it. So get that evaluation, the early diagnosis and identification can help that person be much more successful later in life. So there's specialized instruction, the state has programs out there. The city just really urges you, pay attention, if you think somebody's having trouble reading, they might be having trouble reading, okay? So there you go. And thanks, Robert. And you guys, these guys are doing a great job over at the library. You gotta, if you haven't been over there lately, take a look, it's just really amazing what's going on over there. This is on cybersecurity, so you guys were responsible for Facebook crashing, right? Yeah, thank God. So we had one day where we could actually get some work done, right? So, all right. So we know that everybody's trying to always hack us and you always get the weird email, hey, send me $1,000, I'm in jail. Some people, it doesn't surprise you, but with other people, it doesn't sound right. So you want to tell us a little bit about what Cybersecurity Month means?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. And thank you to the city for bringing this to the community. It is really near and dear to my heart. So cybersecurity awareness, or I'm sorry, prevention begins with awareness. And that's my commitment and the city's commitment to you, is to do a very rigorous campaign in the month of October and beyond to help the community become more aware of how you can protect yourself in the world of cybers, of the cyber world. Really, the best line of defense is all of you, everybody out there. If we can stop these bad guys by educating the community, then we have beat them. We don't want to pay them, we don't want to shut our systems down, but we can beat them with awareness. That is how we achieve prevention. So just thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the entire city for allowing this to become a proclamation and getting it out there. As I look forward to working with everybody on preventing it.
So I think that we all need to, anybody in the room not been hacked? Anybody in the room not gotten one of those emails or one of those messenger messages? Yeah, see, I'm seeing absolutely no hands in the room. And I probably send him two or three a week asking him, should I click on this or not? Inevitably, it comes back, no, with several exclamation points after it. So every once in a while, you goof up and then you end up getting all those other goofy emails that follow it. It's like, man, that didn't look bad. But these guys, they play a lot of games and for, I don't know to what end. But Stuart, thank you very much. Stuart's in charge of our IT department over there and those guys have done a really good job in making sure our systems stay secure and keeping us from clicking on stupid stuff, so. So you know every month that Carrie will arm twist, Jesse, to work overtime? I think he gets paid double for this, right? For being here? No, you're a volunteer. And bring a puppy over here that is in need of a home, in need of a family, or in need of another dog or another kid. So tell us who we have here today, Jesse? And Jesse's from our animal control center right over here on Sierra Highway and is a long-term volunteer over there and was almost a neighbor of mine in Chicago. So here, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight I have Tucker. Tucker is a lab mix. He's nine years old, so he's considered a senior. And he's been at the shelter since the 8th of September. So he's coming up on a month at the shelter. He has good kennel presence, but he's been overlooked a lot. I don't know if it's because of his age or what, but his notes, they say that he would be really good in a single-family home by himself with kids, middle-aged and up. He seems to be like a couch potato. Just wants to be with you. I mean, we had a heck of a good time walking around the park tonight and he enjoyed it. His first time out in real grass for a long time, right, Tucker? But he's got all his shots, he's altered and he's got his chip implanted, so he's ready to go home and be a couch potato with you.
So Carrie, and what other, whatever, what other prizes does someone have to look forward to if they adopt our Critter of the Month here?
Well, we offer to anybody who is adopting one of our council pets or featured pets on our Palmdale Public Safety Facebook page. We dedicate every Friday to Four-Legged Friday, so it's all things animals. And a couple of things we wanted to make sure that you were aware of. Adoption fees for cats and dogs for veterans are free. So, you, there are some stipulations on what type of identification you need to provide, but everything but the license is free for veterans. We don't wanna forget kitties at this time of the month, or any time of the month. But adoption fees for cats for the month of October are only $5. So, if you're in search of a pet, go to theanimals.lacounty.gov. You can search all of the available animals. You do need to make an appointment to see them. But any animal that is available for adoption, you can adopt that day. There's not a hold or anything like that you're able to, they call it love at first sight. So, there's a lot of great things going on at our Palmdale Care Center. Fantastic volunteers that pretty much make the place run. So, we wanna thank Jesse for coming out. And again, if you adopt one of our council pets or a featured pet, you get a goodie bag from the Department of Neighborhood Services.
Great, so, there you go. And we're running well over 100% adoption rate because so many of our dogs get adopted. And so, but somebody comes in and picks up another one. So, you know, these guys, these guys don't deserve to be locked up. They deserve a home. And some, and circumstances got them there. So, let's help them out here. If you wanna volunteer, you can always see Jesse or call over there, and they can set you up. Because they don't want you just showing up suddenly in the scene of a catastrophe without it being properly trained and so that you can do things safely. So, alright? Thank you so much again, Jesse. Thank you, thank you very much, okay? Okay, bye-bye, get ready to go home, huh? Okay? Alright, thanks. And if you wanna bail out, I'll be good time. Okay, I need a waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances this evening.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Loa.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Bettencourt. City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffler?
Yes.
Thank you, most gracious.
Okay. Alright, public comments. This is on consent calendar. You have, you get up to three minutes here. Do we have IT, do we have anybody?
Not at this time, Mayor, no.
Okay, alright. City Clerk?
Yes. I believe we have seven speakers, and they are in order by the list that I just handed to you.
Okay, do we have anybody on...
Not online.
On your electronic?
No, sir.
Okay, alright. Okay, so... Stand by one second. Okay, so, I gotta look here real quick. Give me just one second. Okay. Mr. Zing. So, you have three minutes. And then, when we come to the item number 14, it's a public hearing. There's a separate time to speak on that one, okay, sir? So, you have three minutes right now, so, okay? Thank you. Yes, they've already been talking to Granicus about that. Thanks for bringing that up.
And there's no agenda links. There used to be links on each thing, and you could hit it, and it would tell you about that.
I think there was some sort of a software update or something.
Okay.
And we're not the only city of seven that can...
And also, you guys are the only city that, these are two separate things. Non-agenda items and consent calendar are two separate things on the agenda. You need to have public comment separately on each one. You're the only city in California that has this. So, I think you guys need to follow precedent and go back to the way it used to be. And follow every other city in the state of California. Bullying, you, we're celebrating bullying prevention, but yet, Mayor, you support Paris and his bullying of Michael Reeves, the hospital board member, to remove him. And I think, unless I'm wrong, I think that's bullying, and by a high official, I think that's wrong. I wanna call that out. This is just my opinion on this stuff, but I think...
Everybody has an opinion, sir.
Right. I think natural immunity is real, and I'd like this council to push back on these mandates, policies. It's not right for a person to have to take a shot if they have natural immunity. And you guys need to make a statement to that effect. We need to join California Forward. They're the number-one economic development organization in California, and we are not part of it. And they're having their economic summit next month. Also, we need a California Job Corps for these kids. So, we're missing out on hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars every year because we do not have a conservancy and California Job Corps. If we could put all these foster kids and all these youth planting trees and taking care of our parks and trails. And we're the only place in the state, one of the only places, except Bakersfield. I don't know what Lackey and Wilt do, I think they're worthless. The other thing is... I think that's it, you guys.
Okay.
Oh, 13.13, too? All this money? These are all local people. I find it hard that the city can't contact people like Pete Knight, Palmdale School District, the booster. It's just, to me, it seems weird that these people that owe this money, you just make a phone call. I got some of their numbers.
Yeah, thanks. I think they, I think we have sent them out notices. That's why it's finally gotten to this point. Thank you very much, sir. I have David Harris. You're up, sir. Really sorry to hear about your bus too there. Hope we can get that resolved.
Yes, thank you. I'll hit my little start button here. Good evening, Your Honor, Counselor, Deputy Met, uh, City Manager, almost a Deputy Mayor. Deputy Mayor Laura Bettencourt, you're in my prayers. And council members and public at large. My name is David Harris. I'm the CEO of Community Development Center USA. And we're a very small nonprofit that has been doing some research out here in the Antelope Valley. My children have been raised out here. And a lot of our focus has been in other cities, and it's time for that to change. Our bus was stolen. We relocated a bus up here for community programming. It got stolen over the weekend. I'm happy to report. And I really wanna give a shout-out to Captain Schaefer and his team and his deputies as well. And I wish he was here this evening. And our mayor, who also helped in the recovery effort personally with his Jeep to pull it out of a gully. And Chris Fragazan, who's our dumping task force chair, who was on the scene as well, thank you. And Stephen Wood, a community member, who was also, he's the one that actually noticed that it was stolen out of a locked yard. So, thank you to the team. The bus has been recovered. We think it's gonna be a total loss, which is too bad, but we'll figure that out. The real reason I wanted to speak to you this evening was the Antelope Valley Master Plan created by the Community Development Center USA was released two weeks ago. You have a copy of that in front of you in a blue folder. That plan is very liquid. It also has some key dates in it for us to make a decision if we continue to move forward in this investment. We also have met with J.J. Murphy on the plan, and he has assigned it out to, I believe, the Parks and Rec Department, which has made contact, and which is awesome, so thank you. Really, the plan is a 15-year plan. The past six months, we've been engaging in different groups, organizations, and other nonprofits with a goal of creating partnerships that can all work in a collaborative effort on one larger Antelope Valley community. I've been doing this for 30 years, and I do believe it can be done. Focusing on kinder-to-college programming and bringing more opportunities for youth development at all levels, skills, and trade. I'm wrapping it up. Skills and trade, making the Palmdale the greater Antelope Valley destination location. And I think that those are some key words in there. You know, I'm taking the partners' club, and I know I'm at three minutes. I'll get out. But alls I wanna do is wrap up and say thank you. I think we have an awesome city here, and the participation's been good. More to come, more to come. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I know that you guys made an effort to, when there was a young man killed down Santa Clarita, that you guys were able to bring this whole football team to the service. And so, it's stuff like that that's important that, where we can partner with, within and without, so... Okay, thank you. Alright, these other items are public hearing items. So, we will go to Consent Calendar Council. Any items on the consent calendar that anybody on the council wants to pull for further discussion?
I can't hear.
We've all had, do we have to, we've all had street, this is citywide program, do we all have to?
It's a, it is a general applicability, but we just found out about it today.
So, just in an abundance of caution, based on the city attorney's recommendation. So, that's the only item I have to call.
Okay. I think he was saying just the opposite, but if you wanna recuse yourself, that's okay.
Okay.
Alright, anything else?
Move to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
Second. I'll second that. City... It's a public hearing item, I think. Yeah, it's a public hearing. Public hearing, yeah. 14 is a public hearing. Okay, I'm sorry. City Clerk, can you call the roll on all items under 13, other than 13.13?
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffler?
Yes. 13.13. Do we have any further discussion or...
Who to approve item 13.13?
Mr. Loa, do I have a second? I'll second that, unless Laura, do you wanna second it? Okay, Laura will second that item. City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffler?
Yes. That item carries 4, 1, 1. 4, 4, 0, 2. Now, wait a second. Where's my math? Help me out here.
That'd be 3, 2.
3, 0, 2. Right? Two of 10. Man, oh man, you think this job's easy, folks? It's math! Nobody told me that was gonna be part of the job. Okay, we're on item number 14, public hearings, 14, 1. Can I get a, let's see, it's gonna be Mr. Gonzalez? Whenever you're ready, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Luis Gonzalez. I am the city's Economic Development Coordinator. Before you, it's item 14, 1, Public Hearing and Review of Proposed Resolution Number CC 202196 for Adoption. This is a public hearing to hear comments on the formation of the Palmdale Tourism Improvement District and adoption of a resolution to form the Palmdale Tourism Improvement District. This is our second and final public hearing for the formation of the TID. This is an opportunity to open the floor to receive comments on the formation of the TID and adopt Resolution Number CC 202196 to form the TID. Over the past 12 months, city staff has worked closely with hotels and motels to develop a plan to increase weekend and overnight stays in Palmdale. A Tourism Improvement District is a special self-assessment district in which the funds that are raised by the TID can only be used to benefit those who pay into the district. Based on feedback we have received from the hotels, the goals of the Palmdale TID would be to increase overnight and weekend visitation. For example, investment in our current filming program, which would generate additional overnight stays. The enhancement of current infrastructure to attract state and nationwide visitors. The development of the Palmdale brand. And to establish a regional partnership for events and marketing with LA County and Lancaster. The development of the Palmdale Tourism Improvement District is in line with activities that other cities are doing and is necessary to keep us competitive. If the formation of the TID is approved, then we would move forward with the development of Visit Palmdale, which would manage tourism and marketing for Palmdale. Collections would then begin in November. And in order to maximize representation throughout Palmdale and among lodging businesses, the bylaws for Visit Palmdale do include representation for boutique-style lodging. Boutique-style lodging refers to any lodging business which has less than 90 rooms. Thank you, and if you have any questions, Luis and I are available.
Yeah, I've had, Mayor?
Sure.
You know, I've had a concern about the smaller lodging facilities. And I believe you're addressing the representation portion of it by including it in the bylaws that smaller hotels or motels...
Correct.
Will have at least one representative. But that's in draft form? So, is that guaranteed that that's going to be in the bylaws?
Correct. It is, is, as, once this is formed, then we would form together, bring together the proposed group, and it would be the approval of the bylaws and the proposed Board of Directors.
Okay, so, the, so, there's gonna be seven directors? And at least there'll be four from the hotel industry? The city will have two representatives, and then there will be an at-large?
Um, not a, so, it would be four from the hotels, one being from a lodging business with less than 90 rooms, two from the city, and then one with a interest in tourism, or tourism, or, or, or some form of hospitality.
Okay, and who's gonna appoint these persons to the board?
They would have to go through the city council for the first, the first round, yeah.
So, the same process of advertising and soliciting applications and so on?
Correct.
Alright, and Mr. Garibay and I met a little earlier, and he told me that there's been reaching out to the smaller hotels and that there will be involvement, again, with them to make sure that they participate in this project. My concern is that we're going to be including them into paying this surtax or this voluntary amount. And although it doesn't seem like a lot of money, it could affect some of them. And it's important that they receive benefits from this project. In some ways, the kind of tourism that we wanna seek under this plan may not really... Well, in other words, it may not trickle all the way down to the smaller hotels. But a security system, for example, enhancing security for them might be of great use to them. Even though they are not really attracting some of the, some of the tourists that would be spending more money in the newer hotels, the bigger facilities.
Absolutely, and part of the management district plan, which is what would guide the way that the Visit Palmdale would be managed and what the priorities would be. We have designated funding for stuff like infrastructure improvement, security, public safety. And it would absolutely benefit a lot of those smaller hotels and motels.
Alright.
Anybody else on the council, or can I open a public hearing? Anybody else on the council or can I open a public hearing? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and open a public hearing on item fourteen point one. Have a couple of speakers. First of all, IT, do we have anybody online?
Yes, we do, mayor.
Okay, let's, who do you have?
Participant by the first name of Victor. We will be unmuting you now.
Thank you. Can you hear me there?
Yes, go ahead.
I want to thank, thank you, mayor, city council members and members of the staff. My name is Victor Dollar. I'm vice president, Brighton Management. We currently operate and have two hotels in Palmdale, which is the Holiday Inn and the Staybridge. And I'm calling in support of the TID. And just for a little of my background, I have been involved with four different TIDs in three cities, one multi-jurisdiction, along with a ten-year renewal. And I can tell you that without exception, that they have been a benefit to all of our hotels. I know there was a mention of some small, but I will include the small hotels in each one of those regions in both top line and bottom line in both revenues. And with significant, significant increases in TOT to the cities involved also. So my, my call is really just to ask your support and to let you know that I do believe that every hotel in this jurisdiction will benefit in the long run from these marketing efforts and have been to some meetings there involved and has expressed my interest and our ownership is very supportive of this action. And I thank you. Have you opened any questions?
Thank you, sir. IT? Who else?
None at this time, mayor.
City clerk, any on the other system? Okay, I've got a couple of speakers up here. Mister Zink. Fourteen point one.
I just want to say that I fully support this. This is an awesome idea. I wish we would have done it, you know, ten years ago. I think creating a, to make Palmdale and Lancaster and make Antelope Valley a destination spot like other plate, other regions in the country have, for instance, Phoenix. If we just copy and paste Phoenix and the surrounding areas, we'll be, we'll be awesome as far as bringing people to it. Sacramento, Reno, Tahoe, their websites and everything and their events are out of, beautiful. They have hot air balloons at nighttime that you can see and walk around and they have, you know, at the, at the dog parks, speaking of adoption, they have adopt animals right there at the dog parks during the events and stuff. So that might be an idea for you guys to think about or put some pictures up at every park to let people know. But this is a really great idea. I, I, I love that how the budget is ninety percent of it is going towards promotion of things. AV Edge, it's the reverse. Ninety percent administration, ten percent promotion. So I really would like the city council to have a discussion about AV Edge and how the two of them can work together and, and, you know, promote things, but, you know, if we have more stuff, AV Edge brings in more stuff, the hotels will bring in more money too. So I think it's very important and I think it's important to bring in, in GAVR. You know, because if more stuff happens, real estate agents benefit too. So I think that's
I appreciate those comments and I think with the, when you, when the, with the hospitality industry out there showing their buy-in on this, I think that that will help that process. Thank you, sir. Okay, I have, oh, that was Victor, I think. Was that, was that, oh, that was the same guy. Okay, I, we already got Victor. And I have Melissa. Melissa Batiste? Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, thank you. Hello, good evening. My name's Melissa Batiste. I'm the director of sales for the Element by Weston in Palmdale. And I'm here today to support the Palmdale Tourism Improvement District. I've been in the hospitality industry for about fourteen years, all here in the Antelope Valley. As we all know, this valley is growing. Palmdale is growing. Hotels are just going up. And the corporate business is pretty good, but sometimes we do need that events on the weekend. And this tourism improvement district will help us put our heads together and just kind of think out of the box and target those, you know, events that will generate a lot of revenue for hotels, city, restaurants, just everyone will benefit from this. So I'm very excited if this gets approved because we're gonna definitely put Palmdale on the map, so.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Alrighty. Okay, so that's all the speakers I have on that item. Anybody else that forgot to fill it out on this item? I need a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, any, I'll second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing nothing, hearing none? So ordered. Okay, so the, the staff recommendation is to adopt resolution number CC two thousand twenty-one does zero nine six. Do we actually have staff read the resolution? Did we read that into the record?
Yes, sir, we did.
Okay, all right, good. All right, so do I have a motion on that item or any, any further discussion?
Move to approve item.
You have a motion and a second? City clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffler?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries four, zero, one. Okay, we'll go on to item number fourteen point two. Management Analyst Two, Schuler. Aye. This is very exciting to hear. We have something moving forward over there.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am Micah Schuler with the Economic Development Division. And for your consideration is the approval of the purchase and sell agreement with Covington Investments for the sale of ninety-six acres of city-owned land located at the southeast corner of Sierra Highway and Avenue M. The city acquired a total of six hundred and sixteen acres of vacant land at the southeast corner of Avenue, excuse me, Avenue M and Sierra Highway in May of two thousand and seven. Currently plans are in place to develop two hundred and forty acres of that property for the proposed new Palmdale Airport Terminal and a solar land lease project. The land sale with Covington will not impact the development of either the proposed airport terminal or the solar land lease project. Covington is a entrepreneurial real estate development investment company that has been in operation for over thirty years. It has completed over twenty-five million square feet of commercial and industrial development in more than twenty-five states. Per the agreement, Covington will construct a minimum of one million square feet of new industrial, aerospace industrial and employment flex buildings aimed to protect, support and expand operations at Plant Forty-two and to create new employment opportunities for residents. Covington will work with the city and external agencies to obtain all entitlements needed for the construction and development of the property. Resident, excuse me, representatives of Plant Forty-two are aware of this proposed project. Covington and the city will continue to work closely with Edwards Air Force Base and Plant Forty-two to ensure this project will not negatively impact the Air Force or the contractors at Plant Forty-two. Phase one plans include five buildings, you can see on the screen up there. And at approximately two million square feet. The city estimates that over eight hundred permanent full-time jobs and thousands of temporary construction jobs will be created from the onsite and the offsite development associated with this project. If the initial one million square feet of building space is completed, based on the schedule of performance outlined in the agreement, Covington will have the opportunity to negotiate the purchase of additional city-owned land located adjacent to the project to build additional phases. I am available to answer any questions. And also here tonight, we do have some representatives for Covington, both in person and on the Zoom call, and they would like to make themselves available for any questions you may have as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the applicant have anything in particular they would like to add to what the staff provided there? Okay, does your Zoom guys have anything? No?
Nothing, nothing further at this time. I apologize, my video feed, this is Dana Whitmer, by the way. It's quit on me, so I had to dial in with my phone, but
Yeah, we, we never had that happen to any of us. Okay, thanks. Well, we'll see if there's any questions for you here as we move forward here. City council, questions, comments to the applicant before we open, or the staff before we open public hearing on this item? Okay, hearing none. Always page flipping here, I apologize. So on item fourteen point two, Mister Zink. Oh, before you come up, IT, did you have anybody else online there?
None at this time, mayor.
Okay, city clerk, anybody in yours? No, okay, Jason Sawyers.
This is my problem with this. Nobody locally knew the property was for sale. So I feel like this is kind of a backdoor thing, like what was going on with Ledford, Jim Ledford, mayor, Jim Ledford. Now, it might not be that way, but this is what it appears to me. I've been doing real estate in Antelope Valley for thirty-plus years, born and raised here. If I don't know about it, then there certainly is something wrong, but I only deal with land and development. So why wasn't this piece of pie shared with the rest of the community so we could get a piece of the pie, possibly? You know what I'm saying? How do you know you're not getting, you wouldn't get more money per square foot if more people knew about it? They came to you, right? So why is the city paying the commission of three hundred and some thousand dollars to the broker if they came to you? I would, if I owned the land, I'd say, you came to me, you pay the broker. The, the land fronting Avenue M should go for more per square foot, right, visually than the back. So that should have been calculated. Also, this land here has some of the most prime desert habitat land in Antelope Valley. Where's the discussion about that? These joshua's are beautiful. What's the mitigation? If we're gonna destroy that, what are we gonna do? Are we gonna do something with, where's the money to do some mitigation? I want that discussed. Also, this is, we're just doing this in pieces, pieces, pieces. You should have a whole discussion on the whole development of the five hundred acres. It shouldn't be piecemeal. This is a big deal. This is about the future, you know? Why aren't we having a big discussion and let people know about this five hundred acres, at least locally? I feel like this is not done right. I feel that it needs a delay. I feel that we're giving money away that could go towards, I don't like it that we're making people pay to use the pool or to do park programs or pay six hundred dollars to do basketball. When we, we're just giving money away like this? Why are we charging our residents money? You know, and giving, making these people rich? How about the people locally benefit from this? So there's a lot of things I'd like to say. But the Joshua trees really bother me, you know? Maybe we need to do a little desert preserve out there and have a trail so the workers that work at these places could have some exercise areas. I don't know, but there's a lot I have to question. Why wasn't the public aware of this? Why wasn't there a sign on the property? Why wasn't there discussion? Are you giving our money away? Our city money away. Thank you.
Hey, Jason, before you go, this is, this is Laura Bettencourt. I just want to say it's great to see you back and thank you for your comments and hopefully I'll be back soon too.
So yeah, I, I, I'm sorry that you didn't get the info because I've had a number of brokers contacting me about that property over the last few years, so I, I, I don't, I don't know what we need to do to
So, mayor, just if I could really quickly, Luis Garibay, just, just to really briefly, just to address a couple of the things that did come up.
Do you have to come up?
Yeah, well, let's just, let's receive the comment and then we have official staff.
Comment and then we'll have you come up, okay? All right, and then I have my other comment slip that I have here is Lisa Kraft. Lisa? Come on up, come on up and welcome.
My name is Lisa and I just want to say that the Joshua trees are a natural source for tourism. Without the Joshua trees, we are nothing in this community. This, in fact, the symbol should be a Joshua tree instead of a piece of wheat on the Palmdale sign. I'm sorry. But I don't agree, I went up to the Covington project and there's hundreds of very beautiful mature Joshua trees out there. And I think more public awareness is needed regarding what happens to these city-owned Joshua tree woodlands in Palmdale. Most people believe Joshua trees are protected. In fact, they're not. A developer with enough money can still take them. And also, the problem with the city is they, they, I, I, I'm finding out that they provide minimal information that, that they're required legally to, to, to give to the citizens. But, and Valley Press articles are scarce and written in layman's terms. I mean, there was like a huge article about the rose, so, solar rosemen in the Valley Press. I haven't heard anything in the Valley Press about Lockheed Solar over here. I haven't heard anything at all. This is the city of Palmdale. We need to know what's going on, you know? Yes, city staff is overwhelmed. They're available through email and phone. But often they don't have the answers and they seem to pass the buck to an overwhelmed single person in charge who is unable to answer detailed questions in layman's terms. And the average citizen is unable to navigate scientific reports that have been documented, documented by Department of Fish and Wildlife. A committee of people with the city needs to be created to communicate with citizens what will happen to their Joshua trees. I, I kind of see a, I, I see a pattern, okay, like the, the city park over there by Highland High School. There were trails up there. There was wild nature. And it was, it was sold to developers and now it's closed to the public. There's a big Joshua tree forest over there by Tenth Street West and Avenue M. And I know for a fact that Amazon is, Amazon is gonna develop it. More nature stolen from us. Now a sacred woodland over by, that Covington owns will, 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 they, they want to buy, will, will be destroyed. The Joshua trees, more nature loss. You know, Little Rock Dam closed, Devil's Punch Bowl closed, Big Rock Creek closed. Now we're losing Joshua trees.
Okay, you're gonna have to wrap it up here.
Okay, I was just gonna say the city needs to create a wildlife Joshua tree woodland for its citizens before it's too late, like the city of Lancaster did. And then I just suggest more transparency to Palmdale citizens regarding what's happening in form of a committee where you can explain to Palmdale citizens in layman's terms what's going on. Because every article I read in the, in the Valley Press
We have no control over the paper prints, ma'am, so, you know.
Is my three months, three means it over?
Yes.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So on the, on the Joshua tree items, those items are now under the control of State of California. They quite, I'm trying to think, what's the right term I want to use here? Very regulated? Yeah.
Very, they're protected species.
Yeah, and what they, and, but they, they brought this up right at the height of COVID. I know the city was putting the information out. I was getting a lot of feedback. We were trying to We were trying to provide that feedback to Fish and Wildlife on the mechanisms. Fish and Wildlife had no idea how good our internal program was working, the survival rate of the trees and our mitigation programs were here. Their mitigation, depending on the trees and the system, can range from anywhere from a one-to-one mitigation where they have to provide mitigation for one tree, for every tree that they impact, all the way up to seven, depends on the type of project, the density of it and the quality of the area. So we know that there's a process there and that all this property out there is owned by a private developer. And it's just really simple. If people wanna not see anything built there, they can buy it, but you can't tell them they can't build on it. You have to give them, here's a mitigation. And then if they can do it, they can do it. If they can't do it, then they can sue somebody over it, so. But we've worked really hard and when this thing first came up back in the nineties, I helped craft the original, helped craft that original one along with a lot of people in the community. We crafted the native vegetation ordinance, which took into account a lot more than just the Joshuas. So just on that topic, it's just a sensitive topic and I know we've worked hard on it and our staff has as well. Luis, can you address some of those other questions that came up, sir?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm probably the overwhelmed staff person that she was referring to earlier. I'm also the Director of Economic and Community Development here for the city. So just a couple of points, there's obviously a lot that was included in there. In regards to the price of the property, an appraisal was done by an independent appraiser. And we're actually selling the property for above market value, so there's no discount, there's no incentive in terms of the property sale. We're actually exceeding what the appraised value came in, which is usually the industry standard when selling a piece of property. The second part of it is in regards to the environmental concerns. This is just the first step of a long process that the city's gonna be going through in partnership with Covington and our community partners like Plant Forty Two. Two of the conditions that are part of this agreement is the development of a specific plant to master plan not just the initial ninety-six acres, but the entire site. So again, to make sure that the development is done in a way that's responsible and sustainable and is something that the city and again, our community partners would support. And as part of that specific plan process, there will also be an environmental impact, an EIR process. So I will personally commit to make sure that both the people that spoke earlier tonight get invited so that they are engaged and are part of that process, so that they understand what's going on. As you know, these are things that don't happen overnight. It's a long process, so there'll be multiple meetings, there'll be multiple discussions and we'll make sure, not just to these two, but for the entire community to make sure that they understand what's happening with that site. And then just lastly, again, the Joshua tree as part of that process would be something that would need to be addressed as we move forward. And again, from the development standpoint, they're gonna have to take a look at it and if the costs make sense to develop and continue forward with the project, then that's something that they'll discover as part of their due diligence period, so.
I also understand that on some of the, that the commercial frontage, that we have actually held back on much of that commercial frontage for to be able to dealt with, be dealt with separately for retail along that area, correct?
Well, there's a couple of projects that are happening there. One of them actually ties to the high-speed rail, the, an overpass there on Avenue M.
Right.
Going oversea or highway is something that they're definitely gonna need to take into consideration. So there is gonna be some land near that corner that may be taken as part of that project. So there are other things that are taken, but that's why we've been pushing and Covington has been very supportive of going through the specific plan process to make sure that we have an opportunity to sit down, master plan the whole area and then to make sure that we address all the issues. And then, as I mentioned earlier, I think one of the most important aspects of it is to make sure that we protect what's going on at Plant Forty Two and provide them an opportunity to continue to expand as they continue to compete to get future projects there at Plant Forty Two.
I know just in talking with the contractors and with that, General Smith out there is that there's an enormous need for off-site industrial space, so maybe this can address it. Let's go. Ms. Loa, did you have a question?
Yeah, what about the point that was raised that this was not put out there for the, no, it wasn't publicly advertised? Is that accurate and if so, why?
We've gotten several calls over the, again, in the time that I've been here with the city, we've gotten several calls. It hasn't been formally listed, but we have shared that the property is available. And again, the Covington group came to us with this proposal. We sat down, we went through the process. We also, as part of the Surplus Land Act process, we did have to do the proper noticing to the different agencies, including HCD, to let them know that this property was gonna be declared as surplus land. It is something that the council voted on and approved several months ago as well. So there has been multiple.
So that was advertised?
Yeah.
The fact that it's.
Surplus land, yes.
Undergoing to the surplus plan. Was there any need to actually put it through the listing process and putting it on the multiple and advertising it to perhaps bring other buyers into the picture?
Again, in the time that I was involved with the property, the interest was there. So I mean, usually you'll list a property if there's not a lot of activity on it. But again, the broker community was very familiar with that available site. They were very familiar with the fact that the city owned the property. So again, I fielded personally multiple calls from multiple brokers, both locally and outside the area, asking and inquiring about it. The difference here with this particular deal is, again, one, it's a reputable developer that has a long track record of developing this type of industrial space, which is definitely a benefit. And then also wanting to do an entire project, not just, hey, we just want ten acres of that property. Because we did get a lot of those inquiries to, hey, we just want twenty acres, we just want ten acres. And for us as a city, it didn't make a lot of sense to piecemeal something. We wanted to make sure that that whole area was planned out and then.
Can we, maybe in the future, I know that GAVR has a division or a section, or I don't know what they call it, that does industrial as well as vacant land stuff. Can we make sure that we interface with whoever those reps are so that can be promulgated in the future? So that list of these surplus properties, that, I know there's a number of them out there that we can make sure that other folks are aware. Although, like I say, I've, this particular area over there, I've got a couple of brokers that have been working for a long time to look, to try to bring people in. This is the first time we've had somebody that actually has the money and the wherewithal behind it.
Yeah, and I know JJ and I actually went and did a couple of presentations to GAVR. They have different like subcommittees that meet and there was a regular meeting that we participated in as well. So again, we would always feel questioned on what land does the city own, what's going on? And again, that was definitely another area where we did share some of that.
Yeah, so I did same thing at the government group there, so, okay.
And it's a pretty substantial contract price for this sale. And so there are probably not very many buyers at that level. Well, I mean, apparently there was some advertising, there was some information put out there and there was some contacts, brokers, apparently there's some brokers that got the message. And you said there was a independent appraisal that was made here and the price is substantially higher, so. Okay.
Mr. Bishop, any comments, questions?
No, I think I'll move to place.
Okay. Ms. Bettencourt?
Well, the only thing I wanted to bring up was, I think we need to post on our city website what our actual city logo is. Some people think it's a wave, some people think it's wheat. I do believe it's actually a yucca flower, but if none of our residents can figure out what it is, maybe it's time for us to make a change.
Okay, good point. Okay, do I have a motion on this item then? Okay, Mr. Bishop says a motion to approve.
Okay.
Mr. Loa seconds. City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffauer.
Yes, motion carries four zero one. Okay, fourteen three. Okay, before we get into this, city attorney, was there? I know there was some discussion.
Right.
On the, on the contract side that may not reconcile with, potentially reconcile against the ordinance and that this is gonna, the probably best thing is to bring this back at the next meeting? Was that Mr. Loa's what you were?
Right, on the twentieth, I think that what we worked out in terms of the contract with the city manager, an end date for the four-fifths requirement specifically, and I believe the contract has that, but specifically that it would terminate on December thirtieth, 2024. And I would request that we, that we put that matter over to the twentieth so that we can get that language to clarify what I consider to be an ambiguity about a continuing contract, which in my view could be interpreted that it's an automatic four-fifths extension as well.
And I'm happy to work with you in between those dates to get that specific language and bring that back on the twentieth.
And again, this is. Yeah, that's a motion, a motion to continue it. But I do wanna make a, well, I'll make the motion to continue it to the twentieth.
Do you have a second? Okay, anything further from the council to continue that item?
That, I don't mean this to be interpreted as any lack of support or belief in to our city manager, it's just that I believe that from a policy standpoint, there ought to be some, there ought to be balance, which I think is provided by the three fifths. And at the same time, we certainly want the city manager to be protected so that there isn't some just indiscriminate removal from office. And that's what the four fifths is for the time being. But the language needs to be clarified and so I move to continue it.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to continue this item and we'll have the public hearing at that time, correct, City Attorney?
That's correct when the item returns.
So with that, City Clerk?
Mayor Pro Tim Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop? And Mayor Hoffauer.
Yes, so we'll take this up, this is gonna be taken up on the twentieth, they're not gonna get into discussion about it tonight, okay? Thank you, sir. All right, so that concludes the main part of this. So anybody wanna have, give us some reports on activities? Or committee memberships at this point?
Let me see, on September the ninth, we had a District Twenty sanitation board meeting and the upshot of that is that we voted to obtain significant savings regarding the payment into the retirement funds with CalPERS. I believe for the city of, or for District Twenty, which involves our city, there's going to be an immediate savings of seven hundred and forty thousand dollars annual savings. And in the long term, it's going to be a savings of nine million, seven hundred thousand dollars. So I think that was the most important thing we considered at the sanitation board. And then we had the AVTA meeting, September twenty-eighth that I attended, as well as you, Mayor. And we simply continue to provide a lead nationally for removing our bus and transportation system away from diesel and gasoline, but primarily diesel, to electrical. So we are the first transit authority in the United States that has one hundred percent of its buses operate under electrical. So we continue to invest money in that particular endeavor. So I made those two meetings. I also went to the Contract Cities Conference in Indian Wells and I think that was informative. And then the League of Cities that continued immediately after that. So two weeks in a row, there were two conferences that are important to attend because of information that's provided there on various topics. Most importantly for our cities is local control over our planning and building and safety and the development of housing. And we've had a legislature that has been intent on removing our authority to control our own destiny locally for development. And that is now actually being seriously threatened, that is, local control is being seriously threatened by legislation that was just passed and signed into law by the governor. So if you see in your neighborhood the approval and the increase in density in your neighborhood, such as ADUs or duplexes.
Or ten units.
Or units. It is not because of anything that the city is doing. It's just that that authority and that discretion has been removed from us and is now being vested simply as a matter of right to do that. So I expect to see, and I think a lot of us are familiar with the San Fernando Valley and how congested the streets are there. It's hard to find parking because there's been so many additional units, many of them illegally, by the way, that are being constructed. And so that density becomes problematic. And I understand and support the initiatives to develop affordable housing. That's important. And I think it's important, but not at the expense of giving up our local control and creating densities that I think makes livability in our city and across the state of California less, less livability. So those topics were raised at the League of Cities and I thought that was the most important part of that, although there were other very important subjects as well. And I'll simply provide the balance of my report, although I did attend the Palmdale Sheriff's Boosters Meeting. I'm a member of that board. It meets the first Wednesday of the month, which is tomorrow morning, and I will be there, God willing, and I also attended the luncheon for the Amalot Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce.
Outstanding, thank you. I'll follow up on that in a minute, your legislative issue. Mr. Bishop, you have anything particularly you'd like highlight?
Yeah, I'll just go down the list on some of the stuff I attended. I think we're all at the Amalot Valley Nine Eleven Memorial Ceremony at the AV Mall. I also attended an AVA QMD meeting with Mayor. We funded two hundred ninety-five thousand for new diesel equipment for A to G Sub Farms. We also put two hundred thousand in the account for lawn and garden, the lawn and garden program that we've had going on for a while now, so people can get electric lawn mowers and things of that nature. We funded a towing company for fifty thousand dollars for a new diesel tow truck, I believe. We also had a discussion about moving our board meetings to the fairgrounds or another local boardroom where we can have better public participation and also have it filmed, so we can have it on video as well. Attended the Amalot Valley Sheriff's Boosters Meeting. I also attended Battle Tested Strategies Ribbon Cutting. For those of you who don't know, Battle Tested Strategies is an Amazon delivery company or an Amazon contractor. They've got seventy vans and seems like they're still growing, which is great. And owned by a local businessman and ex-politician out here. I used to, I believe he used to be on Assembly. And he's doing good things. He's running a solid company and providing a lot of jobs. I also attended the Steve Owen Memorial today. And that's, I think that's mostly what I attended throughout the last week, but I'll submit my report as well.
Yeah, I did attend the Steve Owen Memorial today as well. At noon and I did have the honor of knowing Sergeant Owen when I was the Deputy alternate public defender at the courthouse and I had occasion to have cases with Mr. Owen. He was an honorable, honest, straight and law-abiding police officer gentleman. As his wife, Tanya Owen, she also, I also had cases with her. And I was very saddened by the fact that he was so mercilessly gunned down by a criminal. And I was glad to participate in that today.
Yeah, it's good to have you in there. Also, oh, for every audit committee meeting, we elected a new chair and vice chair and started the process on going through our audit.
Good, and on a lighter note, we did attend the Kiwanis fundraiser for the school district. The duck hunt, I think all of us were there and I thought there was gonna be a real duck hunt, but no, it turned out to be little plastic duckies.
Yeah, it was good, Mayor.
And you all showed up in camouflage with your shotgun.
Mayor got in there, really handled those ducks.
I was the official duck plucker.
You were, you really got, yeah. You really got in there.
That's a different story for a different day.
I think they raised fifty, a little over fifty thousand that night.
Yeah, they did pretty good.
Yeah, they did.
We're happy to support that issue.
Ms. Bettencourt?
Well, most of what I've done is clearly.
Well, most of what I've done is clearly um virtually, um I do apologize for that with my treatment. I currently have no white blood cells, so I can't be around a lot of other people. But I do promise you that as I get well and get uh things back to normal, I will be attending more events, so my apologies.
Thank you, we look forward to that. Okay, so I've attended some of these same items, uh Hispanic Chamber luncheons a couple of times, uh attended the uh um, I've participated in legislative forums uh with the Contract Cities and League of Cities. Uh, some of our bills got uh, that we requested uh changes to and stuff, uh, the governor still signed. He said he was gonna do it last year and he did it. Uh, and uh, the unfortunate thing is, is that there was so much um obfuscation in what was going to occur uh with those bills, nowhere in these housing bills that are increasing density is the word affordability. Nowhere in them.
True.
Uh, it's requiring, it's, it was basically um, it's going to allow increased density and a problem that is gonna happen with this, and we told everybody, everybody we had these discussions with has said that they, oh yeah, that's probably gonna happen, where you're gonna see the problem is, in some of our older neighborhoods, um, the central city that were primarily built under the old county regs and stuff like this, you're gonna see those houses, and they're, it's happening right now, they're being bought up by investors, and they're gonna be uh, come in and under SB nine, they're gonna toss the people out, they're gonna split the lots and put four units where it used to be one, and potentially even an ADU on those uh parcels. Uh, nowhere does this say has to be affordable, it's going to uh cause uh significant gentrification, and again, nowhere is there any requirement whatsoever uh to maintain any level of affordability in any of these. Uh, so um, uh, you'll, you're gonna see parcels that have sat for a long time, and developers will come in and they will get a map, approve for the smallest lot that they can, and then state law says they can split it as long as it's at least twelve hundred and fifty square feet. Folks, that's smaller than most houses, but the lot size, twelve hundred and fifty square feet, and as long as they can maintain four foot setback. Here's the ironic thing, people are trying to do buildings right now, they, they can build an ADU under these state laws, but only four foot setback. But don't you dare try to put a patio cover up within that same area, it's asinine. But anyways, uh, all this kind of stuff the state never bothered to figure out. Um, we had a Sister Cities visitation, it was outstanding, I gotta uh have a special thank you to Anlo Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. Bent over backwards to uh, uh, to help with that whole process and make these folks feel very, uh, very welcome here. Um, it, there's uh, there's a lot to be said with being able to learn uh about the community that a lot of your neighbors came from. So that's uh, we learn a lot uh just by, just by that interaction. Um, as Mr. Loa said, we had meetings with the sanitation district, I also sit on the sanitation district that covers uh the uh West Palmdale and Lancaster as well, and uh, the um, these refinancing of these various debt issues and things like this uh will help us maintain um, uh, the, the rates uh and not look at uh huge increases uh on rates and be able to maintain the mandated uh reserves we need in case there's a major sewage problem that, that they have the funds to be able to deal with it. Um, I don't know what that one was, because I can't even read my own writing. Um, I participated at the Contract Cities Conference, a lot of uh superb information there, a lot of stuff on, on the EIFDs that we're working through. Um, I uh had the opportunity to spend the evening with our lobbyists one evening and uh able to, the interaction you're able to get with the other cities, what are you working on, what's working for you, what's not working for you, how did you solve it? Um, you, 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 um, just that spontaneous interaction with the under individuals. Uh, we brought back more money than these things ever cost, so uh, it's uh, we've seen that in a lot of the grants we've been able to find because somebody else told us the trick they found in them, so. Uh, liability trust fund, um, I wish I could tell you more, but uh, uh, we're, we're working real hard on trying to maintain a control over that. Um, the uh, uh, the issues of uh liability um with our local deputies is much lower than other districts, uh other stations and things like that, uh, and as soon as they say that, then something comes up on the news. But um, the uh, people have to realize that problems in every area impacts us because it all gets tacked down as a surcharge on top of our funds, so there's a lot of um, uh, a lot of lawyers getting real rich. Um, the uh AQMD, probably half a million dollars, as Mr. Bishop indicated, that went out uh and was allocated. If you got old gas powered equipment, you realize that that gas lawnmower has the equivalent air pollution component as, what would they say, fourteen or seventeen?
Seventeen.
Something like that, vehicle sitting out in front of your house idling, okay? So you got that, you got that stuff, get rid of it, bring it in, you'll get a, a very substantial uh trade-in certificate for that, where you can go over to Lowe's and get uh Ego brand um mowers, uh trimmers and things of this nature. I've been using it now for a couple of years, I was a skeptic as I was with the electric buses initially, and uh, which I'll, which makes a great segue, but uh, I'm, I'm telling you, these things work great and you can use those batteries on a little, little thing, and you've got a, uh, like a generator that you can use then. So uh, that's something to uh, something to, something to be aware of, uh that's available for you out there. Uh, on the uh AVTA, the new uh MCIs are out there, uh they're starting to runs on them, uh, uh, proof riding them, I guess. And uh, if you haven't seen one of those commuter coaches, uh they are fabulous, they are, uh, they're not only beautiful, the ADA access on them is far superior, you got a basically ground level entrance, it goes in, it's a tiny little ramp, and you have a whole little area there, and uh, they've got the wifi on there so you can do business on the way down, and they're, they're, they're silent as you drive, so just don't get run over by one, they will have to write that check too. Um, uh, Mosquito Bateman District. Okay, folks, we've had a, we're having a problem over in the east side with the eighties mosquitoes, there's other mosquitoes out there, uh but the eighties are the ones that are the problem, there's been some sightings in the west Lancaster area as well. So if you have a mosquitoes out there, go on the, uh, look at avmosquito.org, and go on there and make their report or call them, and they will send a technician out, probably, usually like the next day, they're gonna get somebody out, they'll uh, uh, if they don't have a trap in your neighborhood, they'll get one in there, uh, but um, uh, we don't want to be pestered with those guys, okay? So if there's a mosquito problem in your neighborhood, uh, that's, that's their job. Uh, I had the North County Corridor Cities meeting uh with the supervisor and with the mayors and representatives from the northern corridor area, got an update on many of the transportation initiatives that are being worked on. Uh, the met, uh, I'm most proud of the progress being made on our MetroLink, uh, the EIR's uh material is moving forward, scope of work is out there, double tracking is gonna be coming, the uh, I used to joke that um, um, when we first put the asphalt down up by Lockheed after the earthquake so the trains could run, it used to take you an hour and a half to get down there, and we've got it down to ninety minutes now, so uh, it's, it's actually longer than that because of the freight trains. So uh, so for, for those of you looking for uh, uh, a very comfortable ride, that will be improving, so. Uh, I had a great meeting with the supervisor, uh, it was, started out as a fifteen minute, let's have some coffee, and turned into an hour with about a dozen staff on each side, we were able to flesh a lot of things out, we have to have those conversations time to time uh with our counterparts. Uh, as far as uh non um committee type work, uh, we participated over at the Patriot Tour. Uh, uh, it was over at the, the, the Harley, we did the Nine Eleven Memorial, was out there with the rest of the council members out there, always a moving experience, I was a designated duck plucker for the uh Kiwanis. Uh, uh, this, they provide quite a bit of uh funding for uh unbudgeted and unallocated of uh items that need to be, that our schools need. Um, I did a school visit by Zoom, it's the best part of this job, and being able to sit down, and the sixth graders do not pull punches. You gotta get past their mother's agenda and get down to what their agenda is, and once you get past the fact that their moms are just aggravated about the traffic, then the kids will come out and tell you what the issues are, and, and believe me, it's fairly consistent, their biggest issue is trash out there. So uh, and we're, I know we're all working really hard at that. Um, the food, we had the food truck rollout, Luis, you and your team, Micah and everybody over there, I know I'm gonna forget somebody, so that's, everybody in your team over there uh has just done a great job, uh, that, the um, people love that. And uh, we, we really need to think it, trying to do that more often, I think the dealerships over there like it, and I know we have, I think we're looking at doing the Christmas tree over there this year, right? Uh, because they've got some space and they've offered up some property for that, so that, that's coming. Um, uh, grand openings o- over to the east side of town this uh, this past month, Mr. Fry's man uh is over off of like twentieth? Uh, Luis, help me out. Oh, so it's a, by eleventh, between tenth and eleventh east, uh, so any kind of fries you can think of, uh, they, they can throw something on top of it, so they got that there. And then uh Speed Wash, so that um, uh, behind In-N-Out, it kinda gotten rundown at uh, over a period of time over there. Equipment got tired, there was some staffing issues, uh, new owners over there, they're doing a fabulous job, they've got a great me- menu of services from uh totally self-serve to totally full-serve over there, uh, whole new tunnel of equipment over there, and uh, they're very friendly, and if you um, gonna wait, it's, it's almost like a sports bar in their waiting room over there, it's really cool, I'm waiting for their, come in and ask for a beer permit, so. Uh, which probably would help them get more cars over there, I'm gonna tell you. Um, and I met with the smoke-free Anlo Valley folks, uh, I think we're, a lot of us are on the same page on these issues, and I know that uh they're gonna be bringing back some items for the city attorney to take a look at, and for code enforcement, I know they've been having some discussions uh on those issues as well. Um, and uh, before I end, uh, I wanna recognize uh Chief Stookie. He's our fire chief out here. Um, Chief, can you help uh address, could you come up for just a moment, and uh, uh, there was uh quite a bit of a flap about problems that have been going on since nineteen eighty, but could you please let us know that, reassure people that uh although there can be problems, that they're gonna get taken care of out there, so.
Are you referencing?
Some like response delays and transport delays and, you know, I understand that it's, that it's not just a ambulance company staffing issue, that it's the wall time that our medics are forced to have to sit on the wall, and I know when my mom was in there, we had eight ambulances, two squads, a fire engine, and uh, a chief, and a ambulance supervisor, all sitting there hugging the walls over there, so. And I, and that there's bottlenecks in the hospital as well, and, and that it's a problem all over the county, so can you help reassure us a little bit here on what's being done?
I can, I'll start by apologizing, missing the last city council meeting, Nine Eleven ceremonies, I was on the Dixie Fire for twenty days, so. Missed both of those events, I know our team put a lot of hard work into it, so, well done on that. So, post co- is there a problem? There is, but we're navigating it, there's a whole bunch of people that are leaning into it, so. Within the Anlo Valley, it's a busy place, there's twenty engine companies out here, twenty fire stations, multiple paramedic squads. The AMR ambulance company is one of our primary ambulance transport companies. Just like anything else right now, whether it's restaurants with finding waiters and waitresses and, and different things, the, the the COVID window, along with that, shut down EMT schools and different things for two years. So everybody is reaping the challenges of keeping things staffed. So, with that, over recent weeks and days, and it's an ebb and flow from day to day, uh, there's two things, well, first and foremost, the fire department's constant staffing is always the constant staffing. There is no change on that staffing model, so we're doing good, whether you wanna be at work, you're gonna be at work to maintain those staffing levels out here. So that never changes.
Ever familiar with that one?
Yes, sir, I know you are. You wanna work tomorrow? No, sir, I'll see you in the morning, that's pretty much how it goes.
Yep.
So, with regards to the ambulance companies, the contract is, is dependent, if you include the Santa Clarita Valley, about twenty-eight ambulances, they've had days where they've dipped down into the teens, which is a problem, but then along with that, the other layer, so they're short on EMTs, I can tell you, AMR, the company itself, they're leaning fully in to try and fix this problem. I can tell you personally, the AMR supervisors are spending time with the hospitals significantly to get the patients off the ambulance gurneys, get them into hospital beds and get that ambulance back available. It, it's the cause and effect from layers, they're, they're working diligently to keep up with EMTs. The hospitals are also working diligently to keep up with their nursing staff. So this cause and effect, layer upon layer upon layer, creates delays. I can tell you this, this last weekend, uh, we were down about twenty-five percent on the ambulance companies, we had a conference call on Sunday. AMR, McCormick, there's mutual aid layers that are being put in place. Um, if somebody is concerned that they're not, we're, we're not gonna get them to the hospital, we're gonna get them to the hospital. We had some delays the other day, and it was just a plain busy day in the Anlo Valley, we, that, that ebb and flow. We transported some people in a paramedic squad, we transported some people in a sheriff's car, we transported some people in an engine company. At the end of the day, if I look at a, a, a family member or one of your family members and they're sick, whether it's aircraft, engines, paramedic squads, sheriff's cars, AMR for that matter, we're gonna get them to the hospital at a reasonable time.
Appreciate that, Chief, I know you and I had a conversation about that, uh, my email and phone blew up, and I tried to reassure everybody that, number one, if you don't need an ambulance, get in a car, if you're bleeding, get in a car, you know? Uh, there's a lot of things that paramedics can help with, there's a lot of stuff that you're just gonna be, you know, you're, you're waiting for somebody else to show up. If in doubt, make the call, but uh, um, you know, we have a significant portion of our community uses the fire department and EMS system as their primary care. Um, establish better relationships with the primary care physician, with your medical groups, understand when the uh urgent care centers are open, urgent care centers can take care of that cut and that bleeding and those sutures and things of that nature, you know? Uh, and a, and a, nothing special happens just because you called nine-one-one, get an ambulance, you're either waiting in the waiting room, or you're gonna be waiting on a gurney in the hall. So uh, uh, but the problem is, is we're waiting on a gurney in the hall, you're waiting with, you got an ambulance crew or a paramedic crew that's tied up, so. We appreciate your efforts on that, Chief.
Along with that, so we've implemented a policy.
Sorry, Ivan, my microphone doesn't like to work, could we put a pin in that one? We can either bring it back and put it on an agenda to discuss it, but
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for the brief update
You bet.
On a timely item.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Alright, so with that, um, the city manager's office?
Thank you, Mayor, um, I, I did do a quick search on the uh, the logo there, and uh, it's Yucca or Joshua, but I'm going with Yucca. So we'll get that figured out. Um, just wanted to say today marks thirty-one years for me at the city of Palmdale, and I'm, I'm happy to be here. Happy to be here at the Dais, thank you very much. Uh, born, raised in Palmdale, love this city. And uh, I think we have great potential, and the future is bright, thank you.
Thank you, city attorney? Nothing further? Alright, everybody, uh, thank you very much for being here this evening and, and uh
If we could uh, just real quick, we could have our city manager, or uh, look into one thing. Um, maybe we can look into bringing back the Ring program for a second round, second round?
What program?
Uh, the Ring program.
Okay.
I know we had great success with that.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I, I know that some of the communities have been looking at it, but I think Ring may have discontinued that, but if we could take a look at it, that'd be great.
Yeah, let's take a look at it, it's something we can bring back, something that's still going. We just had such good success with it the last time, I, I feel like we could benefit again.
And uh, can we also make sure that um, uh, we're gonna schedule a, a presentation uh for the Sister Cities folks, because there were uh, um, our Sister City brought some uh items that we'd like to show the community because it belongs to them now.
Yes, sir.
There's a lady out there, please.
What's that?
Get your attention.
Hi. No, we do that at the beginning. Is this on the uh, yeah, about three years ago? Uh, is this on the uh, on the uh red shoe thing?
Yeah.
Briefly? Briefly?
Are we?
Yeah, do I got concurrence on that, to let her come up and speak briefly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, you guys.
Laura Gordon's on to Club of Anlo Valley, um, our walk a mile is October thirtieth, thank you city of Palmdale for allowing us to use Potlon Square. I just have flyers for you to challenge you to bring Team Palmdale, because we are having it finally in Palmdale. And like you said, Mr. Mayor, two years ago, sad to say we have to have this again. We opened with domestic violence and we're ending with domestic violence, and we, we want to end domestic violence, and we want to get the awareness out there. So we do, I do have some flyers for you, so thank you.
Thank you, can you uh
Yeah.
Provide us with, give
Thank you, Laura.
Give him the city clerk, and the city clerk will distribute them to us, okay? So based on that, city, city uh attorney, do you have anything further, sir? Okay, alright, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting, and uh, we're adjourning the meeting to October twentieth, correct? That's gonna be the, that's gonna be the workshop night?
Yes, sir, that's Wednesday, October twentieth.
Wednesday?
Seven P M.
Wednesday, October twentieth, so.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.